Good evening, everybody. It's Tuesday, August 19th, 2025 at 6:03 PM. And with the Corbinian present, I'll call to order the Free Town Board of Sock Meeting. Tonight's meeting will be on Zoom as well in person. Tonight's meeting will be recorded and will be available on our town's YouTube page. Tonight, we will be going into executive session and then coming back into open session. We are going into executive session for the following three reasons. First, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Free Town Police Association because an open body, open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and chair, so declares, and I do. Two, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and chair, so declares. This is lawless for the town of Free Town, and I do. And number three, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if a open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and chair, so declares, and I do, and this is for the water leak at the police department. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. All right. Okay, we're now back in open session from executive session. We're going to move on to agenda item four. This is discussion and vote whether to approve open session minutes from 7:08, 2025, and 8:04, 2025?
7:28.
What did I say?
7:08.
7:28, 2025, and 8:04, 2025. Thank you, Deb. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve those open session minutes.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, and then now, agenda item five, discussion and vote on request from the PTO organization or parent teacher organization regarding the fence at the Free Town Elementary School. Got some folks here to join us for this discussion, and there's some folks at home as well?
Correct.
All right, Deb, want to kick this off and kind of just lay out groundwork here?
So I think apparently the PTO would like to add a fence to the school for the preschoolers in different grades, and they're looking for some help with that. Originally, I think they were looking for, you know, some help physically, if the highway department could install it and install some playground equipment. We weren't comfortable, or I can say I wasn't uncomfortable, and I did talk with the town council about the liability that that might entail. So I think they're looking for some financial assistance with this project, and I said maybe, you know, possibly we have some funds that we could put towards the fence at the elementary school.
Okay, and then, and this is the fence that is, so obviously the fence along Memorial, was that Memorial, wherever this road is right here, right?
Yeah.
That one's fine, because it's not like, it's the one abutting the woods, right? Which makes sense that we don't want toddlers and young children going out into the woods. And the total cost, estimated cost, I know that the quote is now expired, but that was around, what, seventeen thousand?
Yeah, that's what it was.
Mr. Matthews, may I interject for one second? I just want to make sure we're clear on the playground, because there's two different playgrounds at Free Town Elementary School. The one on Memorial Drive, we call that the big toy, which is usually grades one through three.
Yep.
On the backside of the building is where the pre-K and kindergarten playground, and that's the playground that they're referring to, to have the fence placed around, not the one that you drive by.
Yep, that's right, that makes sense.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I was also like, initially, like, I was just thinking, like, is that fence, like, the fence that is there, is that in decent shape, you know, currently? I mean, just makes me think, like, is there an opportunity to do, you know, is there economies of scales in fence? And if we're going to do one fence, does it make sense to do all the fences if they need to be repaired, you know? So I don't know.
Is there any fence there now?
On the pre-K side?
Yeah.
Near the woods?
Just woods?
No.
There's no fence?
Not the pre-K kindergarten one, no, there's not.
Is there any road traffic that goes there? Any vehicle traffic in that area?
Not, not during the school days the best way, but at the end of the day, when the playground, what we would call it off limits, children are not there because vans will actually come there on the backside to pick up children from their, so there is, but please note that is not like traffic, that is vans that are by the district that are used at that time, and it is a scheduled time that they come through.
This is a request from the PTO, right? Not the school district?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anybody from the PTO? Sarah, we can't hear you.
Someone's camping.
Nothing yet.
Maybe John needs to turn it up.
We need audio.
There you are. I overhear a voice.
That was me, sorry.
Oh, that's okay, we can hear you, so we at least know that someone's there.
Identify who you are, please, for the record.
Hi, I am Stacy Shamoski, Sarah's PTO co-chair.
Well, thank you for joining us.
Thanks for having me.
I guess my question is, do you have any funding at all for this fence?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good. Sorry, Sarah Del Lee, co-chair of the PTO. Yeah, so I, just a little bit of background, I guess, that where the request came from. So we, as a PTO, had reached out to staff members to ask, you know, if there was anything in particular that they would like us as a PTO to purchase for the school, for their rooms, things like that. And one of the requests that came up was this fence, so from some of the recess monitors, from the kindergarten teachers and the special education teachers who have students on that back playground that Mr. Ward was just mentioning. So, you know, while it doesn't abut Bullock Road, per se, theoretically, any student, if they were quick enough, you know, and these are the little pre-K, kindergarten, and our special education and South Coast Collaborative students are on that playground. So, you know, the teachers, as they described it to us, kind of have to form of, you know, they'll stand in between where the road is and where the playground is so that students cannot run in that direction. But theoretically, the students could either run into the woods or towards Bullock Road where there is high traffic. So we just felt, as a PTO, we weren't sure if it was our place to be purchasing a fence. It felt more of like a, I don't know, appropriate for the district or the town being town property. Like, we just didn't know where we fell into it. So while we do have the funds technically to purchase the fence, we just weren't sure where we, where our role was as a parent teacher organization, if it made sense for us to be purchasing a fence. And just to touch on the other question, I think, so there is a current chain link fence on the other playground that Mr. Ward mentioned, but it does not fully wrap around. So it does kind of keep kids off of Memorial Drive and keep that safe because that is obviously a higher traffic area. But I would just say from a personal standpoint, it wouldn't be a bad thing maybe to look at kind of the bigger project. And I know the gate going in could use a little bit of repair on that where, from the parking lot in the back of the school going into the playground, that gate is a little cumbersome to use. So, so when this came up from the teachers, you know, we kind of took the initiative to work with Mr. Goodwin, with the school district, to ask him to get some quotes. The quote that he did receive was from Southeast Fence Company, who I guess the district works with. And so that's where that document that I sent over came from, and that was, like you said, Deb, it was seventeen thousand dollars in change that that came from. So, yeah, and that was over a year now, so I'm sure we'd have to get an updated one. So that's just kind of the background of where the request came from and why we got involved. But like I said, we just felt like it may be more appropriate to have the discussion between the district and the town and understand the right path for funding it.
Yep. Okay, thank you very much. And so, and so the district does, just don't have the money for it, is that kind of another part of this? Is that what we're saying here?
Well, I can tell you that I started April 1st, so much of this had occurred before I came on board, and the, kind of the first I heard of it, I was at a PTO meeting toward the end of the year, and the PTO mentioned that they had gone down the road asking for the fence as a result of a teacher request that came through when they were looking, exactly what you heard tonight. So I haven't had the opportunity, we haven't had the opportunity really, to do any significant investigating around other needs associated with the fence.
Yep.
I mean, we do have some capital projects that we need to bring forward.
There's lots of priorities, I get it.
Yeah, tons, right? Am I going to say no to a fence, you know, that's going to ensure the safety of our pre-K and case students? Absolutely not. But to say that we built this into the budget at the time, we didn't.
Understood. And I know there was something also in the packet related to a potential grant from Auchan Claus, maybe, or somebody, I thought I read that.
Well, originally, when this first came up, I know Alan and I had the superintendent at the time discussed it with Senator Rogers.
Baxter, that's who it was.
Then that kind of funding kind of dried out from the Senate side of the House at the time, so I'm not sure if we, if we reach back out asking for the same funds again. I'm not sure if we've done that. Or even South Coast Collaborative, I don't know if anybody reached out to them as well to say, hey, this is your, your students in a sense, or your children coming in. That was the discussion at the time, so I'm not sure if we went any further than that.
Okay, so.
It's been a while.
So, but I guess to address the first kind of question that Sarah brought up, where, like, is this the role of the PTO? I mean, like, this puts me, I have no problem with it personally, given the PTO. I'm also, I think, as a board, we have a kind of a donation fund that, I mean, we'll have to vote on it, but I, I'm interested in, you know, potentially helping with some of the costs there. And then, I mean, it's, I feel like I don't want to put the district in a weird position here, where, like, I don't want to have to sign up for something right now that you might not be able to come through, but, like, from a money perspective, Sarah, like, is, do you guys have enough? Would this be a big investment for you folks, or is it something, I don't know, where you stand, like, how much money would you feel comfortable spending, I guess, on this?
I don't know, it's, um, yes. I don't know. I don't. I don't know exactly how to answer that, I guess. We, like I said, we do have the money in our account. We try to focus our funds on, you know, like, field trips and classroom materials and things that enhance the curriculum and experience for the students. So while I certainly agree that it is almost a necessary safety feature for the playground, I just don't know how the parents whose fundraising would be paying for a fence, I just don't know if that feels appropriate.
Understood, understood.
It feels very much, right, like a facility project?
Yeah, it does.
And not something the PTO would focus on.
I agree with that.
So, you know, to that, to that end, I think Sarah and I and the rest of the PTO had kind of had a bit of this discussion when I met with them in the spring, and we do have a meeting coming up between central office staff and the PTO chairs and co-chairs in the beginning of the fall, so we can kind of outline whose responsibility is what.
Yeah.
It seems like over time, the PTO very generously has taken on some things that really aren't what I think the intention of a PTO is for.
Understood.
And I've been, I'm now the grateful recipient of some of those things, but I really think we need to refocus to do exactly what Sarah's talking about, you know, have the money that the parents are raising go exactly to curriculum support and enhancement activities for the students and not physical or capital projects that, that should be the responsibility of the district or the towns.
Yeah.
All that being said, this is something that's been, it looks like this is an estimate from 2024, and it seems like it was a conversation that was taking place before that, so I would hate to change midstream when we maybe have the opportunity here to put this safety measure in place and, and support something the PTO did ask the teachers about.
I, I agree. I just do want to see that we do, I'm a big advocate for doing something once and doing it right. And I don't want to say, okay, we're going to put up this section of fence and then afterwards finding out, well, you know what, we probably should have done this, right? So do we look at this as, as a larger scale, make sure that we do what we need to do once, do it right, and be done with the project? And, you know, to Selectman Matthews' point, I think, you know, we do have some funding, and I, I think it's a worthy cause to, obviously, it's our students, it's, you know, young children, and I, you know, so I'd be completely okay with us, you know, giving up some of that funding to do it.
I think that, you know, I think originally I thought that the request was to participate, like, give, you know, sort of a portion, maybe five thousand dollars towards the fence, but I'm hearing that the request is for the whole fence to be paid for by the town. So we've been working with Principal Ward, Jack Higgins, Superintendent Greg Goodwin, about capital needs for the Free Town Elementary School. And, you know, we've brought to that, to the town's people, we've been voted for money for repairs. We are going to be coming back before the town, my anticipation anyways, at the next meeting in December, to ask for funding for the boiler to the tune of about a million dollars. So my thought process might be to include in that language that would open it up to the boiler and/or other repairs such as fencing. And that way, we can incorporate.
That's what I was thinking too, like.
Like, the whole twenty thousand or twenty-five thousand, because I'm thinking, like you say, if we're going to fix it, fix the gate on the other, because that gate has been defunct for some time, in my opinion, and that's just from me going up to the school, and get the funding, incorporate it into the funding that we need, because I'm hoping that the boiler doesn't cost a million dollars. We set aside a million, maybe it's nine hundred and fifty thousand, and we can use the other fifty thousand for repairs that are necessary, because that school is at a point where it needs, it's going to need some ongoing work, as we've discussed, we just got the funding to do the roof repairs. So I think while I'd like to see it happen sooner than later, I think the, the opportunity might be to roll it into the next request that we have coming before the town in December, and let the people know that that'll be, if there's money left over after the boiler, it'll be used for the fencing.
Or could we, could we just do a different article and try to get funding?
You could do it separately, too.
I feel like that, you know, because.
Intransparency.
Yeah, just like, you know, and it's one, as one extra article, say, I think that in the short term, you'd want to get another quote that will be valid during, you know, the December meeting.
Yeah, so we know exactly what it is.
We know what it is, and then add like a fifteen percent buffer on that, because we know things are going to, you know, nothing, nothing hurts what you think it's going to cost. And then we just ask, and I, I can't imagine our voters, you know, not supporting this measure, right?
In the, this layout, and I keep going back to the layout, but would, this was what was agreed upon with Greg and team as to what should be done, or was this just, like, this was the immediate fix? We need to put this here to block the students into this area, so to speak, was, was that how it was looked at? Because I get nervous when I heard Sarah make a comment about, well, on that side, they're not really a hundred percent blocked in, and then, oh, this gate is, you know, not working the best, and the fencing, I know, along Memorial Drive isn't the best, right? So I think that I start thinking about all that, and to Trevor's point is, like, let's, if we're going to do it, figure it out, do it once, do it right.
I can't speak to what occurred at those meetings. It seems to me like this is an estimate just to meet the need that was conveyed to the PTO on the survey that they sent out. I don't think, I didn't get the sense in my brief conversations with Jack Higgins about this or with Mr. Ward about it, that there was any thought to look at any other areas of fencing at the same time.
Yes, so Sarah, just a quick question real, do you feel that the PTO, you know, would be, you know, okay with us potentially waiting a little bit longer and, and getting some funding from the town to actually, you know, do a more, you know, all encompassing kind of fix here to the fence system, fences at the school?
Yeah, absolutely. I think just hearing that we have the support of the town.
Well, you, you kind of faded off there, Sarah, I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I think that would mean a lot to the PTO.
Anyone else? Let me make sure I'm not going deaf.
We can't hear you.
It's weird, because it, like, we could hear you, and then it, like, slowly trailed off. This is, this is a new IT issue that I haven't seen yet with Teams, or whatever we're using.
I'm sorry, I don't know. I don't know what's going on. Can you hear me now?
But a thumbs up if you agree with what I said.
That works.
Okay, so I think.
That was a definitive thumbs up.
So, and has that worked for you folks as well? I think that makes sense.
Certainly.
I mean, I see this is, it is a town building, I know, it's kind of, you know, we're, being in the school district, it's kind of a weird situation, but, I mean, I think this makes sense, and also, like, it, that playground probably is also used by, you know, can be used by, you know, kids in general, you know, it's not just always for the school, which I'm not sure if that's true, but.
So originally, I thought it was just to contribute towards the fence, but if we're going to pay for the entirety, I think it should go to town meeting on an article.
Yeah.
And we're going to be looking at doing that in the fall with hopefully some free cash, but also some other big ticket items that the school, you know, as you know, we've been meeting trying to plan what we need to fund the school repairs that are coming our way, the roof and doors and windows and the boiler.
The date of the December town meeting is?
I think December 8th.
Correct. It's at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM?
Six.
Okay.
Okay, so we, no votes now needed then, right?
No.
I think so.
All right, well, thank you very much, appreciate everyone's input.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll make sure we have everything ready and in order and to you well before December 8th.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move on to agenda item six, discussion and vote to award the contract for the South Main Street Bridge Preservation Engineering Project, and Luanne was able to provide me that, today was the, ranking the bids, right?
Mm-hmm.
It looks like of the three firms that we looked at, McClure got the highest score of one twenty-four, is, am I allowed to say that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I don't know if we're going to award the contract, because we haven't negotiated the contract, so I think it was just going to award the work to McClure as the, the, the firm that we chose to work with on the engineering, based on their.
Okay, so, so how am I going to phrase this? It's going to be that we select?
Yeah, select.
Select them to move forward with?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with McClure for the South Main Street Bridge Preservation Engineering Project?
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. And then this is just authorize Deb to negotiate and sign the contract, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize town administrator to negotiate and sign contracts for South Main Street Bridge Preservation Engineering Project.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
And that's funded by federal grant money.
Yep. Okay, agenda item eight, discussion of what, which selectmen will participate on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for the Main Street Bridge Preservation Project. Any takers?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind jumping on it.
Yeah. Yeah, if you want.
All right, it's a pretty cool one. So, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to have Selectman Loebz participate on behalf of the Board of Selectmen for the South Main Street Bridge Preservation Project.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
I recuse.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Okay. All right, so I have to, I'm going to recuse myself for this vote, I'll leave the room. I just happen to be close family friends with a developer related to this, so I'll be right back, and just let me know.
All right, so I'll, I'll just, I'll call everything out then. Selectman Matthews leaves the room?
I can say whatever you want about him.
Only good things.
That's right.
All right, agenda item number nine, discussion and vote whether, as road commissioners, the Board of Selectmen, A, intend to lay out road for Fallbrook Lane and Algonquin Way, B, refer this article to the planning board for their action, and C, place an article in the next town meeting for acceptance of the road. So we have some plans in front of us for a proposed subdivision, looks like, I want to see.
This is mainly a procedural, a procedural.
I was just going to try and call out how many lots it was. It's, it's not that big of a deal, but it's a roadway, but, you know, we are the road commissioners, so we have to take acceptance of the road and send it on to the planning board and let them do their due diligence and put their expertise on it, so, I mean, I don't see any issues with it, do you?
Neither do I. So you have six, seven houses potentially?
Yeah.
Small area.
Yeah, so, all right, so with that, I entertain a motion to approve the road commissioners for the Board of Selectmen as intended to lay out road for a Fallbrook Lane and Algonquin Way, and then B, refer this approval to the planning board for their actions, and C, to place this article in the next town meeting for acceptance of the road.
I make that motion?
I will second it, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz?
Yes.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Let me go get Selectman Matthews.
All right, moving on to agenda item ten, discussion and vote on the installation of the cameras at Bull Ramp. I saw the two options that we have. The first option for actually, you know, connected via, like, a cellphone card, pretty much, right? Is that a way, or a data plan, I guess, would be the way to describe it? And that option was about, if I remember correctly, like, twenty-five hundred bucks plus forty bucks a month?
Correct.
And then the other option two was just have a self-contained kind of closed caption television system that can only be, footage that has to be retrieved.
On-site.
On-site.
So if someone broke in and took the equipment or ruined the equipment, then you wouldn't get the footage anyway.
Yeah, I mean.
And the other thing that the IT person that I worked with, Chris Renner from Net Respect, he did mention that with option one, that SIM card, if you were ever to have emergencies around town, you can pull a SIM card and then put it into other devices and have internet in other places.
I like that.
In the town, which I thought was a really good feature.
Option two just doesn't really seem like an option to me.
It's old school.
Right.
CCTV is great if you have an enclosed facility that is monitored by somebody at all times.
Exactly.
We would almost need an alarm system for that system to protect it, which is just ridiculous.
So, silly question, maybe, but like, is this like a month-to-month plan? So like, we only really need probably video on that for the summer months, right? The Bull Ramp is active?
It is open year-round.
It is technically open, you're right, so.
I did, because of the recent jet ski, Deb had asked me to reach out to Doug Cameron at the state, the fishing game, wildlife, to see if we'd close the gate at night. I've reached out twice, haven't heard, but we have had problems in there over the winter months, but you just never know what's going to happen.
What I think the real value we get for this is that when people realize that there's a camera on them, that they're going to change behavior dramatically.
They might behave themselves?
Like, and I, and I.
Responsible adults.
That's a good concept.
I saw some embarrassing body cam footage from an incident in Newport this week that reminded me how, you know, you don't want to be, you don't want, you don't want to be put on film these days. So I think that, that option one makes sense to me, and then I think this might also open up the opportunity for, you know, potentially other spots that we want to do this, and, you know, this will be a good, kind of, like, this is, I think, our most pressing need, But there's probably other, you know, facilities that we might need those.
I agree with that, Selectman Matthews. I think, you know, if we had another location, I'd like to see one at the bow ramp. Lot of recent activity there, not the bow ramp, sorry, the beach.
Yeah.
In that area. Lot of recent activity there suggests that we may need some eyes, especially at night, at Long Pond. So I don't know if that's, that's probably a different vote versus this camera.
There's also power issues and a lot of other things that we're working on.
We're getting power down there, which we get a grant.
Yeah, so that's still, that's already being talked about, right? We've talked about it, but this is, I think, too, for us to just learn from for going forward, right? Like, to figure out if this is a good system. Does this system limit the amount of cameras? Did they say anything about that, Luanne?
We were talking about one, but you can put as many as you wanted to.
I think you'd want two.
One camera, I think, isn't enough usually, especially when you're talking about a space of that size and maybe having some different angles and, you know.
I think you might want two. I think you might want one at the shed and one down closer to the water where the old shed used to be.
You'd have to run power down there?
Could we put solar panels?
Well, look at a camera, especially at a high area like that, those cameras won't capture license plates. So if we gotta put two cameras, I do like the one next to the shed, or the entrance to capture license plates coming and going, because the overhead view ones will not capture it. Though you can zoom in, it'll get very grainy. And if, let's say something does happen lawfully, we have to go to court. Those won't be very, very, very good for our court case. So a license plate camera at level, although probably not as popular as other cameras, would be, if we do two, that would be the way to go.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, cuz I just think about it for angles if something, God forbid, happens, but also for safety of our employees that are there during the summer months, right? So.
Yep.
I just think that there's, there's some different stuff and we can talk about that down the road. But I just wanna make sure this doesn't, you know, say we can only put one camera on it or two cameras.
We can have the, the guy that's been working on all the cameras and the security within the town that we've been doing over the last year, we can have them look at it and tell us.
He's gone out, so if I just ask him about the second one, I'm just not sure about the, cuz the power just goes to the shed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he said you could get, put one camera on the shed and send it down and get the kiosk and get the whole parking area.
Okay.
Would be similar to like that, when they come in on that pole at the transfer station.
Yes.
And that catches license plates.
Okay.
Yes.
Stuff like that, however that.
I think, I think at the end of the day, we should have to be strategic about it.
Or we could put the one, and then if that doesn't meet the needs, then we could always look into adding a second one. I just don't know about the power down there.
And the.
Like you said, solar, maybe. I don't know if that's an option.
Yeah.
And so will police have access to that? Felt like a camera feed?
Like, they've only, like, they had someone who committed a crime and went past town hall and they came to us to get on them. They don't have the credentials and stuff to get on any cameras.
There'd be a server there. How all the other cameras have servers?
Yes.
So we're gonna have to put a server in there?
I'm gonna have to ask him.
Yeah, cuz I.
That gets expensive.
Actually, it's part of the equipment, was, was a small server because it was such a small, it was only one camera. It was a small thing in it. That should be included in that twenty-five hundred. If you wanted a second camera, it's probably like around four hundred for the cameras now.
Yeah.
The basic one.
Yeah.
We don't pay a monthly fee for the cameras, though. We've been buying them out, right? Setting them up, and we don't have the monthly, cuz originally our cameras were all monthly. We would pay Comcast and they were down half the time, and then we just pay this monthly fee. The systems we have now are much better than what we had under Comcast, and we don't pay a monthly fee. We just have to pay for the internet.
Right, okay. All right, so I think we're on, it consists here, so I'll I'll entertain a motion to go with option one in the packet, which is use camera equipment at other locations that can be viewed remotely and get a SIM card so that we can store that feed in the cloud.
Subject to funding.
Subject to funding. Yes.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's a revolving account. I just don't know how much money we have. We might have to wait until we can put more money in the revolving account.
And we can up our charges, right?
We can't up our charges, but we have money in the revolving account. But you know, at town meeting, we vote to move so much of that money and be able to use it. I just don't know if we're gonna run out.
The gentleman you were talking about.
I have to roll call that last.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Selectman Loebz.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes.
That gentleman had said that we're already at like the highest of high.
Right.
For fees charged.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's owned under the state and run through the town. We have to fall under what the state.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So we can't, I wish we could.
I remember at one point, we were under the understanding that, you know, if our operating costs went up, then we could up the fees to, because at one point, we were considering upping the fees as a way to, you know, as a mechanism to maybe incentivize people to come. That was deemed as something we couldn't do.
I have not looked at the budget this year to see what are, how many people have come. The weekends have been beautiful, so I bet you it's been busy.
I'm sure it's been busy.
I've seen a few of the reports that come through for like the kiosk payments and stuff like that. And it's, I think it's higher than normal, but.
And the kiosk is working?
Yep. I get a report every day and it's supposed to tell me it's not. But I check every Monday to make sure that it's getting charges, just in case, so it's knocked down.
All right, great. Knock on wood, yep. All right, so let's move on to agenda item twelve, oh no, sorry, agenda item eleven. Discussion of vote whether approve ambulance payments and write-offs for July in a sum of three hundred and forty-four thousand, sixty-three dollars and thirty-two cents?
Sixty-two cents.
Sixty-two cents?
So there was some digging in done on this one, right?
It's a lot of money.
I'm gonna sit down with Matt and the chief and go over this.
Yeah.
I've had some concerns for some time about the billing company, and I wanna sit down with them and have a conversation and dig into it a little bit further.
Okay, cuz, yeah, this is probably the biggest one we've had.
It's by far the biggest one that we've had.
There's some old charges on here, that's why.
Okay. All right, well, nothing we can do about it, right? Right now?
Not at this point, no.
All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the ambulance payments and write-offs for July twenty-twenty-five.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loebz.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right, agenda item twelve, discussion of vote whether ratify, to ratify the signatures and approval of the agreement between the town of Free Town and Comtrack Corp. for municipal fiber.
This project.
I tried reading through the contract and I couldn't, I mean, there's a lot going on there.
I'm excited for this project. It just needs to happen.
Yeah.
I know, right? Can we just get it done here?
Right.
But anything like notable that we should talk about on the contract, or is it pretty?
Looked pretty straightforward from reading it. It looks like once they start, a few months later, this is done, right? This is just a ditch witch that just buries as they go, right? So once it begins, I would think with, even with some delays, well within six months, it looks like, right? They're saying three, three months or four months, whatever it was, but let's say they hit some slate. Maybe a box turtle has to be moved or wait, wait for it to move.
I don't think that's the issue here. These are all overhead, but it's just timing.
Yep.
It, like, I saw, it was, of the, the contract consisted of following together with this agreement, and then striked out was performance bond and labor and material payment bond.
I don't know why, cuz they need a payment bond, so they, they've gotta give us that. And we've gone back at them and said, you have to, and that was in the RFQ, so I'm not sure why they struck that out. But they said, okay, I think they, they did say that, right?
He's asking some questions. We have to get back to him.
Yeah, but I, I'm gonna go back at them with the payment bond. Based on procurement law, I have to have it.
Yeah, that's right. Figure that's.
So I'm not sure why they crossed that all out. They did that?
Yeah, okay.
So unless you can't get one, and then that'll be a whole nother issue, but I can't imagine why they wouldn't be able to.
Okay. Okay, so, but I think we're, feel comfortable moving forward, though? All right, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the signatures and approval for the master agreement between town of Free Town and Comtrack Corp. for municipal fiber.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right, agenda item thirteen, discussion of vote whether approve contract between the town of Free Town and Enri, Enri, uh, wow, can't stop. Eric A. Kinshirf? Kinshirf?
Kinshirf.
C P A LLC for municipal financing consulting. This looks pretty straightforward. I guess just.
Really, basically, this is the consultant for the treasurer or collector's department that we really just need his services to help us automate and digitalize and make more efficient the processes that we have there. And it's difficult to do that when you're doing the work.
Yeah.
The day-to-day work, so, and I think also it's helpful to have a different set of eyes on procedures and processes. So we don't really need their services for, to help us do day-to-day. We need them to look at our process and procedures and update them.
And they have the, like, you know, you know, they're obviously doing this for a lot of other municipalities. And I think that's probably a great thing. And the rates seem reasonable.
We met with him. I thought he was great. He's gonna work with Patty and Matt. And he's worked with some other municipalities. He's, you know, so I'm excited, actually, to have him come in and start working and, and help automate, really just automate that department so that, you know, things, just, we're, we're stuck in like nineteen-seventies with our, our capacity.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Did he give any kind of closer view as to what this potentially would cost? Cuz it just, you know, he gives hourly rate, but then says not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Well, that's.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep an eye on it. Obviously, like I said, if you look at what he wrote, he, you know, he's like, to provide services for the treasury. I don't need that, right? So I'm just gonna take, if you look at the A, B, and C on that contract, just see on that, and I'm gonna tell him that that's really all we need. I think maybe originally when we met with him six or eight weeks ago, because we, we had a vacancy in that department, and I, I asked him if he could fill in if we needed it. But we're not gonna need that. Patty and hiring Melissa, they're all, they're doing great. They're all kinda caught up since we just had tax payments due, so they're, they're all doing what they need to do. Now it's just looking at ways to be more efficient with our resources and be automated. And like you say, he does a bunch of other towns, so he knows, okay, so-and-so does this in this town, and.
Yeah, that, well, whereas what I mean, I'm a consultant, so I, you know, sometimes it really is useful to bring in another set of eyes.
I'm gonna use the H R budget to cover this for right now, so that we're okay to move forward with it. I think it's important. I think there's just, we hit some roadblocks in that department every now and then, and I, I need to get them like I said, efficient, use the resources.
Yeah, and future-proof it, right? So, yeah, it makes a lot of sense.
Like we talked about before, if there's a time to do it, it's now.
Yeah.
Yeah, before, before we have a big problem, right?
Yep.
Okay. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract between the town of Free Town and Eric A. Kinshirf is what I'm saying now. C P A LLC for municipal financing consulting.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes, and then fourteen is related, it's just to approve Debbie to sign the contract. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the town administrator signing the contract between town of Free Town and the consulting firm for municipal financing consulting.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Selectman Loebz.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. Okay, agenda item fifteen, discussion of vote whether to allow exclusive access to the bandstand for holiday decorating on weekends from November second, twenty-twenty-five to November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, on Saturdays and Sundays, eleven A M. to two P M. That's crazy. This is already coming up.
I know.
This one hurts a little bit.
It felt like Fallout the past couple of days.
All right, I have no issues with this. Anyone else have any issues?
Not at all.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve exclusive access to the bandstand for holiday decorating on weekends from eleven to twenty-twenty-five through eleven-thirty, twenty-twenty-five, on Saturdays and Sundays from eleven A M. to two P M.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Loebz.
Yes.
Selectman Zager.
Yes.
Selectman Matthews.
Yes. All right, agenda item sixteen, discussion of vote whether approve entering in the lease agreement for two twenty-twenty-six Dodge Durango Police Cruisers with All American Investment Groups. The total amount is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for both of them?
Yeah. It's a little pricey for two vehicles. Especially on a lease, and I keep seeing these leases come up, and I keep, I, I don't, I don't know.
We talked about possibly changing away from leases, right? At one point, and possibly going to buy out, but it didn't make sense when we really looked at it, right?
Well, I think the thing is, I, this has been a longstanding program where we, we have, we lease vehicles every year, right? Every year, we lease new police vehicles, so it's usually two on one year and then one the following year. So even though the, it's a lot of money for the leases, they'll be paid over three years, and then we own them. So it's a lease-to-own program. I talked about, it didn't make sense necessarily to borrow money when we, which is in essence what we're doing.
Yeah.
When we have cash in the coffers. But I think the chief was hesitant to disband the program because it was difficult to get in place when we didn't have money, right? So I think, and I said, well, I'm not gonna, I'll let this ride. You know, I was just trying to pinch pennies on some level. Why spend money, any money on interest when we have money sitting in the bank? But the lease program that's been set up for years is good, and the interest rate isn't crazy. It's not like it's.
Yeah, like, it's, it looks like total, like, the debt service here is like a total of eighty-seven hundred dollars on hundreds, you know?
Yeah.
Of the hundred and sixty-five thousand that we're paying, it's, that is a pretty, you could probably do the math quick. You're a math guy. But that seems reasonable.
So I just kinda thought, let me leave it alone, rather than what if I take the program out, right? And it's kind of all set up like a well-oiled machine, and then we, we start paying cash, and then we can't pay cash, and then we're trying to start all over again. Like, we're all set up with them. It's, it's, it is a lot of paperwork, but it's, it, it's all done, and we just have to sign some things. So I thought I would leave it alone. It's one of those things, I think, sometimes you're better off leaving things alone than upsetting the apple cart, and this is one of them.
Carl, your point, like, that does look expensive, but I think that's just how much a cop car costs.
Well, no, yeah, with all the decals, all the special equipment inside there, all the electronics, yeah, it makes sense that it costs high. It's just, I'm looking at it going, we don't need any new vehicles. All the vehicles we have are fairly new. There's no need to keep buying these every couple of years. They don't need new vehicles. They need a vehicle that runs, and the ones that they have are running. So I'm, I'm looking at this going, why are we doing this again? At least wait a little while to get other vehicles.
I, I would disagree in the fact that I think that something like this is emergency vehicle, right? So it should always be new, and, you know, we, we need these guys that are being called into emergency situations. I wanna make sure that they have vehicles running to the utmost, and.
Oh, right. Oh, absolutely, but.
I mean, I think that that's why, what, what she's talking about, they looked at and said, okay, here's the amount of cars, so we do two this year, one the next, and it'll always happen that way, and it'll be the quickest way to keeping, the best way to keeping the.
And then like, so whatever, so like, how many cars we have in total?
I don't know. I think it's like eighteen. Do you know?
So then there's ones rolling off. So like, like, what's the like, I guess what is?
Right, it's eighteen vehicles, but three people are driving them per shift. There's three vehicles out there per shift.
Well, there's certain vehicles, and you have like the chief's vehicle.
The detective.
The detective's vehicle.
Lieutenant.
Oh, one.
And, but then you also have, like, I know that some of the vehicles, it's not just the mileage, it's the amount of hours that they've run, right? Like, that's some of the things we've talked about. We've had some of the vehicles that they've gotten rid of because it's like some crazy amount of idling hours that they're sitting there, so. Listen, I'm, I'm all about saving money.
I mean, but I think, I, I think what we should, I, I'm cool, I'm go with this, but maybe we should just talk to the chief and beg, hey, like, should we reassess what the schedule is? Is, do we need to do two in one, or maybe is it one a year? Like, you know, we, we can have those discussions, right?
Right, you know, that's how I look at it. It's, we've been doing it this way for X amount of years, and it seemed to have worked prior to that. But we're not getting any reports that things are broken. We're not getting reports that the maintenance are overdue or that things are breaking down. So there shouldn't be any issues why they can't come to an emergency in a timely manner. Definitely electronics, so to keep buying, I know it's a hundred and fifty-six grand, but our job is to be as, as as frugal, yeah, exactly, you know.
Question things, and I, and I guess that's why, and I, but I do, now that we're talking about this, I feel like we had, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut into what you were saying, that this conversation was had with Galton at the time, right? And he had talked about some different scenarios and saying that this is really the frequency at which it had to happen. And I, I, I don't wanna put words into someone's mouth who's not sitting in front of us, but I do feel like that now that we're talking about this a little bit more, I do remember having this conversation with him and the frequency I do remember having this conversation with him and the frequency.
Yeah.
Of the buying of the vehicles, more than using the lease program, but the frequency that we buy the vehicles.
Yeah, and I don't think it's, it's crazy for the number of vehicles that we do have, but I can certainly during budget season put, have him put together a presentation for the board so that, you know, you can answer, that he can answer all of your questions about the number of vehicles. I, how many years? I mean, it's like the ambulance, right? I know every three years we have to replace an ambulance and that's just the way it is. And every three years, we're gonna have to spend a half a million dollars on a new ambulance because we have two and that's a six-year span from the time we buy it. And it's, that's just the number of miles they put on. He can give you that information. I just don't have it for the vehicles.
Yeah, another thing, the thing, I just thought of this, like, I bet if we sign this lease agreement today, like, we probably don't get the car for another fucking year. Like, so it's like, you know, then that's another year of wear and tear on the other vehicle that's getting sunset. Like, it's, it's, it's always, it's a delayed thing. All right, now, this is a good conversation and I think that something we definitely push back on or just at least have a conversation about.
Oh, right. I, I think we could honestly all say, all three of us are pro-police. This isn't a, oh, the police is getting too much or we're spending too much on it. It's not that at all. So, for those out there listening in, that's not what we're saying is. Our responsibility is to be responsible to the town funds that we have and this seems a little, especially since we just did one of these not too long ago. All right?
Probably a year ago.
So, yeah, so it's, it's, it seems like, like, I would love a new car every year. That'd be fantastic. That's not the facts, right? It's that I can't do it. Um, I just gotta look at it again.
Okay, all right. So, with that, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, entertain a motion to approve entering to the lease agreement for the tw- twenty-twenty-six Dodge Durango Police Cruisers with All Investment, All American Investment Groups LLC.
Motion made, second.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slickman Loops?
I'm gonna no. Never accused.
Slickman Zager?
Yes.
Slickman Matthews?
Yes. Okay, and then this is just for Deb to, uh, enter into the agreement. So, agenda item seventeen, discussion of vote whether authorize or, oh, sorry, let me back up. I'll entertain a motion to authorize town administrator to sign documents relating to the lease for two twenty-twenty-six Dodge Durango Police Cruisers from All American Investment Groups LLC.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slickman Loops?
Eric Hughes.
Slickman Zager?
Yes.
Slickman Matthews?
Yes. All right, now I'll kick it over to personnel.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, Personnel Board, item agenda eighteen, acknowledge the resignation of Nicole de Avignon as library director effective ten fifteen twenty-twenty-five. Nicole, thank you so much for everything you've done for the library. You'll be missed. Um, and that's just an acknowledgement, so again, thank you. Now, item nineteen, discussion vote whether to approve the library director job description. So, as you saw from eighteen, Nicole's leaving us. She's, uh, she, she's following her dream, so we can't, we, we, I'm gonna miss her. Same time, how dare she? No, just kidding. Uh, good for her. Um, it's the time to do it. It's, it's right for her, so that, so that matters, right? We, we owe her a grade of, um, so much, cause I'll think she's done for the library.
Yeah, she's been awesome. I will, yeah.
So, we tweaked and updated and played with the job description. You know, hopefully you all had a, a chance to look at it. So, we're trying to get the most, as, as competitive as possible to what we've identified, not just this position, but many others that we hire in town is. We're all going for the same resources across different towns and municipalities and everything else, so, um, nothing extravagant in that, in that description. It's just kinda makes it more attractive for somebody outside looking in, especially coming into a free town, which, you know, we're in the middle of potentially building a new building, right? Or we're, we're in the middle of contract and OPM and everything else. But, you know, there's some, uh, other things that, you know, they have two older buildings they have to deal with and everything else. So, it's pretty comprehensive in a sense, especially, especially all the events that her and Kylie have put together over the years. So, um, the description is there. If we have to adjust it, we can always come back later on and tweak it, especially if it comes to benefiting salary and everything else. I'm sure we'll have that discussion again, so.
All right, that's good.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm okay with it.
Perfect. All right, I entertain a motion to approve the library job description.
Make that motion?
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slickman Loops?
Yes.
Slickman Zager?
Yes.
Slickman Matthews?
Yes. All right, now, town administrator report?
Yeah, I just, uh, just wanted to say a couple of things. First, I wanna say thank you to Nicole for giving us two months' notice.
Yeah.
That's very helpful for the town to be able to get this job, uh, posted and hopefully bring in a new director, uh, before she leaves. But at the very least, you know, at the same time as she.
Giving her the fighting chance, yeah.
So, I really appreciate that. Um, it's nothing wrong and, and it's, it's extremely helpful to the town, so I just wanna recognize that. That's, that's awesome. It's sad to see her go, especially since she's the one that's been fighting so hard to get the new building and she's been integral in that and now she's leaving. Uh, but I, I wish her the best of luck. Of course, she's, you know, she's gonna do what's good for her and I'm happy for her in that respect, but I did wanna thank her. Um, the other thing is Excel recycling. I know, um, you know, they're doing their best to try to be a good neighbor and they did, they, they knew that the softball league that took over for, uh, K R Resendis, there's some repairs, a lot of repairs that need to be done there to get the fields up and running and in the best shape for the girls softball team. And they donated, uh, substantial funds to help the softball, um, relay softball girls teams to do some of that work, especially on the, on the dugouts. So, I just wanted to, to thank them for being, uh, good neighbors. I, I've been on vacation for two weeks, so I'm a little stale, but I think that I, I think they had the COA Stop and Shop cookout, didn't they?
They did.
They did, so that's always thankful to Stop and Shop who comes every year and brings, um, all the food and the supplies and usually it's a pretty big turnout and they love it. So, um, thank you to Stop and Shop who's also a really good neighbor, uh, in the town and does a lot for the senior center. They do a lot. They do a lot on, you know, for the town in little ways. They help us with the, um, the, with the day that we clean the trash.
Oh, yeah, 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 the, uh, Green Earth Day?
The Earth Day. They do, I mean, they do a lot, so again, thank you to Stop and Shop. Other than that, um, like I said, I'm just coming back in two weeks, so I'm just trying to get myself back into everything. Working on the, you know, the fire station is, I hope, in wrapping up.
Yeah.
They've got, they're provisionally into their new offices, so hopefully in the next two or three weeks, that project actually is finished and complete. Not the new fire station, but the addition to the fire station, so that's exciting. Moving forward with the land and the engineering on the land. Um, and of course, we're working with the, the OPMs with the library and the COA to get that moving forward. So, I think that's where we're at right now. Um.
Awesome.
That's all I really have for everybody.
So, my son, uh, went to the, uh, music event they had and, uh, and they had a great time and I got the cutest picture of him playing the guitar, he plays guitar. So, I think that actually just maybe, um, you know, increased my, what I'm happy spending for Christmas this year, cause it looks like some instruments are in the, uh, budget now. Um, but yeah, that, that was a great event and they had a great time, so I just wanna shout out to, um, organizers that as well.
Yeah, I, you know, I will say Kylie, Rebecca and Nicole work very well together. They put a lot of events on for the town and for all age ranges. It's, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping we get somebody to fill Nicole's shoes in that because, like I said, the three of them together have just done a phenomenal job bringing a lot of events to the town. And you can really tell the difference, I think. I think there's just a greater sense of community.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think that's totally true, so.
Well, you heard, you, you saw the contract. We're working on the bridge, so that'll be South Main Street Bridge Preservation Project. It'll take a couple of years, so I don't want anybody to panic. The road will not be closed anytime soon. You will have ample notice, but that is coming.
It is.
Over two thousand and twenty-seven is what we're looking at right now. I'm retiring probably in twenty-eight, so I'm hoping we can push it off to then.
Denied.
That's all I got from now.
I like ending the meetings on positive notes, right?
We gotta sign and then.
That's it.
Deb, you just can't leave before me. That's fine, babe.
Yeah, there'll be a front project to get off the ground.
Bridge project?
Yeah, the bridge. I'm looking forward to the bridge project.
Yeah, the bridge project is, you know.
I had a funny feeling you were gonna walk that one. I was gonna say, I'll take it, but I had a funny feeling you were gonna try and jump on that one.
Well, started with like working with the Congressman Alpey, you know, getting the money and everything else speeding down there and, you know, you kinda take a, like, anything, you, you find a project, you're like, oh, let's see this to provision.
Get childcare coverage.
Some challenges there in that bridge project.
Be a lot, a lot of challenges.
Okay, I should've passed that down. I don't know what I was thinking there. Gotta have this on my name for a second. It's like, oh, how do I do this again?
I can't believe it's full. It feels full.
Um, and I know I missed a few meetings, so thank you to these guys for holding down the fort while, uh, you know, had some scheduling conflicts. All right, but with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Slickman Loops?
Yes.
Slickman Zager?